Okay, Leslie.
Everyone, I'm going to be starting the webinar, so it will be completely recorded, so that'll be starting in a moment.
Do we have a forum to start?
Well, I can start this and then shut it down if we don't ever get a forum. This is just to get the recordings going, so we get it in there.
Everyone, I'm going to be starting the webinar, so it will be completely recorded.
He's starting the webinar.
I should start this. So how many people were here?
Last thing online.
Online, that's three.
I'm not heard from.
Howard was clearly joined.
I'm here.
So he got four, because Howard's on there too.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to get started here in just a minute, as soon as we get everybody on the screen. Victor, can you do the gallery view, so we see everybody? There we go. We got Howard. Looks like we've got four board members. Yep, that's what we need, all right. So with that being, it is now 6:31. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Will you go call? Tony, here's me.
Nate Price.
Leslie Post.
Howard Alstorf.
Richard Burrows. Okay, we've got a forum, a pledge of allegiance, so those of you that are online, face. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, our nation, our God, and to this law, liberty, and justice for all. All right. Any comments from the public? Debbie, do we have any comments from the public?
Uh, nobody, I don't believe anybody signed up.
Nobody signed up. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, as all board members have a chance to look at the previous month's minutes, the October financials, and the enrollment report. And if so, are there any questions? I did have a question on the enrollment report. I noticed the numbers have gone down a little bit. Victor, a reason for that?
So, we had some departures at the elementary for a variety of reasons, but we had increases of the high school enrollment report. I think our challenges at this point are really focused on how successful is the virtual instruction? And there is a kind of a parental fatigue that has to do with the whole COVID crisis situation. And while I've had several emails and conversations with parents, I remind them that the Arkansas Arts Academy has an infection or COVID-related percentage, which is half of that of regular or traditional public schools. And while they're looking for regular, in-person instruction, I remind them that it's just not really something that they can expect in this current environment. And I appreciate the stress the parents are under, but they're looking for the best thing for their kids. One of the great advantages we have in this district is, as a small school district, we provide the kind of security and safety of a smaller situation, with less exposure to a large population. And they're still struggling with those particular things.
Do you think that's why the shift with the elementary?
Yeah, I think it's just a, it's just a current environment that we're trying to work through at this point. Parents too, I appreciate it.
Do you want to share what we learned from today about being able to offer virtual?
Yeah, go ahead.
I spoke to Tracy Webb today in Little Rock ADE Charter Office, and asked her, can we offer virtual spots, just strictly virtual spots, starting at the top of our waiting list and going down? And if a parent refuses virtual, they want to stay on the list and wait for an onsite position, they can do that. But that allowed us to continue to move down the list and capture the virtual students.
So we can't have just completely virtual students that have never been in the school before?
Yes. And although that's not ideal.
Right. But it gets our numbers, because that's.
Right. Well, and it also gets them in.
Into the system.
Into the system.
And this is all prompted by Nate Price asking the question during finance about, what are the options for people who have been struggling for one, two, or three years to have their students come into the district? And this would be an opportunity to say, if you come in this way, this might be a way for you to be a part of the.
So if they give in virtually, will then, will we go back to onsite? They will be able to go onsite?
Absolutely, absolutely. We can't exceed our 1200.
1200, right, right. Okay. Thank you, Nate. Absolutely, that's great, great question to ask. Because if it keeps our numbers going, then I'll.
Show me the money, and that helps.
And there is a bonus that is made available by the Department of Education, meaning that you have had this kind of growth from your numbers. And so we are rewarded by that experience, by including those people in the registration. And as I understand, and I'm grateful to staff for reminding me of this, reminding? No, informing, because I had no reminder. Is that we can advertise for spaces that are available anytime during the year.
Okay, that's great.
And the money he's talking about is in addition to growth, the expected growth money.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
So it's good business, so it's good business.
Absolutely. Anything above our three-quarter average daily membership from last year, which was, it ended up being 1,110, any number above that, we get additional growth money.
Howard, Leslie, did you have any questions about the consent agenda, enrollment report, anything there?
No, sir.
All right, well then, with that, I want to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from last month, October financials, and enrollment report.
Still moved.
I've got, do I hear a second?
Second.
I've got a first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Ayes, have it, motion passed. All right, the next thing moving on is district reports. And Richard Burrows, what can you tell us about the district?
Thanks, Tony. So, hello. Month number two. You know, I sort of like am now marking these experiences by board meetings, because this tells me how far along we've come. So I think things that are happening in this regard really have most to do with interacting with people and trying to get a sense of forward motion for the district. So I'll just, I'll just sort of like, you know, list the litany of things that are here. I've met with the virtual high school staff in a meeting, and one of the great advantages of that was, they were at home, they were in their living rooms and their kitchens, and they didn't have a mask on, so I had seen them for the first time. That was really quite exciting, because I don't really know many people, because everybody is just a forehead to me. Next week, I have an elementary staff meeting, or no, no, tomorrow. Is that right?
That was planned.
That was planned. Okay, so I'll meet the elementary staff tomorrow. The good news, good news, and Debbie and I have been working on this regularly, that all reports to the State of Arkansas are up to date. It's taken us some goodly amount of work to try and update our status with the state reports. In the past, you had to provide reports when you were in some kind of needing status, but currently, every report that comes out of the State of Arkansas is required at every district, and so we've been catching up in that respect. Debbie, we're good? I think we're good.
We are good.
We are good.
I checked it.
Yeah, so thanks for that. Heather Wright and Matt Young and I met with the new fine arts specialist from the State of Arkansas. She's new, probably just maybe only a few days older in her job than I am. And so she's working out the details of what her relationship is with the Department of Education. And I'm grateful to say that she has some really interesting ideas about professional development, and how we might be able to move forward with providing mentor arts teachers who, or professional development providers who could really help with not just, this is how you could do a better job, but really to model in classrooms here at the Arkansas Arts Academy with that work. So that was a productive meeting. I did recently meet with Flint Co., who did, you know, so much of our construction work here at the, at the high school, and they're very interested in helping us to move forward in terms of whatever will be our potential elementary school renovations. And they and I are having a conversation with the original architects about, I don't think I even told this to Heather, sorry, about, but we've talked about the struggles that we have with the Performing Arts Center here in the high school space, about how to make it more usable and viable for a variety of opportunities, and they're very excited with some of the proposals that I put forward. Good news, hey, Debbie, day two, you and I worked to try and update the SAM.gov, which is the federal awards program that provides us with funding to the district. And it has taken us all of eight weeks to finally update that information. And I'm happy to say that we're, we're finally on track. Thank goodness. I have a friend in the New Hampshire Department of Education, and when I said to her, just in a kind of casual email, so what do you know about SAM.gov? She said, well, drink your coffee. So it's been a struggle, but we finally updated it, everything's cool. Staff and I have been meeting with providers for school status, which is a new program for being able to track the information that goes back and forth from the district with parents and students and otherwise, so that we're really cataloging the very careful information about what's going on in, meaning the instructional needs of the district. And I think we're really close to a contract with that particular group. We have weekly, or not, sorry, I wrote this down, it's wrong. We have monthly meetings that involve principals and the district staff, so that we're all on the same page with what's going on. So that's usually on these days, so it's just in preparation for the board meetings. And then I have weekly meetings with the district staff at Poplar Street, so that we're regularly meeting to have a conversation about what is our next tactics at hand. I have twice a month of meeting with principals. This is to sort of set out what my expectations are, and to hear from them about what's needed. Victor and I have been trying to reorganize and organize a pending website update meeting, really can unify the website, so it looks like K through 12. And then it's really about programming, not about, this is the elementary and this is the high school, but rather, if you're a user of this site, what is the easiest way for us to be able to move into that information? I can't say this is the most exciting thing that I've done in my second month here, but I've done tier-one administrator training, free and reduced lunch training, charter salary equity meetings, all of those with APSRC. Fascinating. I just have to say that when you're going to do these things, make sure you have plenty of chocolate at hand. Pending and complete district staff personnel review is in process, so this has to do with district staff and with principals. One of three meetings that are sent forward is just going. The first one is to really establish kind of a conversation about what are expectations that we can do to move forward to promote the district. Second is to establish what are the goals and objectives between the district and these particular individuals. And third is the final review that says, did we meet those goals? Did we meet those objectives? And how can we move forward in that particular respect? Last is pending and complete meetings, which I'm sort of really happy about, because individual teachers have contacted me and said, I want to talk to you about these particular ideas or these particular experiences that I've been having. How is it that we might be able to move this agenda forward? So one of the best things is, is I've given all of the individual staff members and teachers my email and said, because I'm just crazy about unanswered emails, email me with your ideas, email me with your questions, and I will respond in a very brief, short period of time. So meeting with individual staff is really important to me, because they need to be able to feel that like they have voice to the top, so that I can work back down to principals and individual district members for that activity. So that's just my introduction to what I've done in month number two. And I'll open it up now to the rest of the district reports. And this are questions from the board members. Any questions from board members?
Not here, that's good.
Okay, very good.
Sounds like you're right ahead.
Really, that was the longest I've talked to.
So I looked what's up next, I guess.
Child nutrition.
Debbie.
Debbie. I wanted to briefly touch on cycle reporting. We've just completed submitting cycle three on November 9th, and that covers a lot of information about busing, the mileage, state inspections, driver's names, physicals, professional development, all that's pulled into this report. It also covers the school calendar and district quarterly attendance reporting, also attendance details on students, our ELL students, homeless, and the general information reporting on each student. Adding to the data pulls, we also pull student medical immunization and all student contact person, that's your guardian, your contact people. And finally, the school safety drills, which includes monthly fire drills, quarterly tornado drills, and a once-a-year active shooter drill, which we usually do in the spring. As Richard mentioned, also, we do the bank reconciliation as well. It's included basically on every cycle report. Rich and I are continuing to monitor the state information system and the End of Stars for required state reporting. As far as child nutrition, we've kind of leveled off from the surge at the beginning. We ended October with a small negative balance due to the fact that we had no meal sales from March, April, May, and June. We began regular and virtual meals again on August 24th, with higher cost, startup costs, due to restocking food items that had gone out of date, and stocking containers for virtual student meals, and also in-classroom meals, they all have to be packaged. The invoices we paid in October were for the August and September, so they were higher than average. This month, I just received today, and it's considerably less, it's down to $16,000. We were notified that our district will receive about $7,200 in COVID relief for our child nutrition program. They looked at our expenses last year and compared this year, and they awarded us the $7,200 to help offset those costs. We have just begun weekend meals for our virtual students, breakfast and lunch, and they can be ordered as they do their weekly meals, and picked up during the week at the high school kitchen.
So is that available for any students then?
We're starting with virtual, and then we would like to move next step to our more needy students, and then we hope to open it up to all students that are interested. We're working to see what, if the staffing and if the labor costs and material costs warrant the weekend meals, so we're monitoring that right now. I'm just completing the verification process that's required by the USDA, and I'll have that ready to submit in December. I did start refunding student lunch accounts for the meals they were charged from August 24th to September 10th. And I've completed one of 28 pages of refunds, so I'll be working on that, hoping to have that done by the end of the semester.
So, Debbie and I did not talk about this, but I just had this conversation today with other superintendents of school districts, where they had decided, based upon availability, they would stock a series of long-term shelf-life meals that are high-quality, so that in the event that the cafeteria would go down, or that other situations might occur where we can't provide them with the kinds of meals that are immediately available, that we would have really high-quality shelf-life materials that we could distribute, so we wouldn't have a stopgap in opportunities. And so the state's supporting that particular activity, and we might want to think forward in terms of stocking some amount of that material, so that we are not being reactive to a situation, but really we're prepared for a situation in case that would occur.
Are they anticipating weather, or?
It was everything, it could be anything. You know, the utilities went out at a school district, it was weather, it was a failure of contract, whatever it was, but really just to have these long-term shelf-life products would mean that we wouldn't miss an opportunity to provide our students with the nutrition that they need.
Okay, I'll visit with your mark about that.
So good to you.
All right. And Debbie, that's it? Thank you. Well, let's hope we're going to move on to COVID stats.
So, Katie, you are our hero. I just have to say that I, we could not do this without you. I just, I thank you so very much for your attention and your detail, and making sure that our families, our staff, and our students are safe, so thank you so much, so please.
So I wish I could speak off the cuff, but there are things I didn't want to forget to say, so I'm going to be reading. Right now, we have a total of 30 cases that have cumulative cases that have occurred in our district. On the K-Safe campus, we don't have any active cases, but we do have 18 students that are quarantined. On the high school campus, we have nine active cases, 46 students in quarantine, and fewer than five staff in quarantine. So on last Wednesday, November 3rd, the decision was made to pivot to virtual for the remainder of the week, sorry, on Tuesday, November 3rd. So we went virtual Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from both campuses. This was due to four positive cases being identified within four days. Two of the staff members identified as positives have contacted multiple students on both campuses, even though all students would not fall under the definition of close contact. Over the days, our district was virtual, I received reports of seven additional positive cases of COVID-19 on the high school campus. Close contacts were identified and advised to begin quarantine, and the cases were reported to the Arkansas Department of Health. The senior class was also asked to continue virtual instruction through tomorrow, due to two of the positive cases being identified as being present during Senior Picture Day. Surveillance video was reviewed from Senior Picture Day to accurately identify who would be considered close contact from those cases. The increase in cases concerns me for many reasons. I know the increase is not unique to our school. Last week alone, 21 schools around Arkansas made educational modifications due to COVID infections. The percent positivity rate in Benton County was 5% to 6% when we started school in August, and as of today, it's 14%. This is above the state and national average, which are 12.6% and 8.3%. Our campuses follow the strategies that are listed by the CDC to reduce the risk of transmission on campus. Everyone's wearing a mask, desks are situated apart where we have space that allows that. Students don't gather in the cafeteria for lunch, visitors are limited, and those that are allowed on campus are screened. Students are kept in assigned seats, or students are kept together and in assigned seats, so that we can trace close contacts more easily. These are just a few of the things that we do in our schools. However, we can only do this on campus, we can't control what goes on when students leave. The seven cases I reported last week are the first I've seen since school started, that I've been able to draw a line from case to case, because the gathering that occurred off-campus. I say all this to ask for help. We can only do so much on campus, and our teachers and staff are doing a lot on top of everything that they already do in a regular teaching year. We need help to encourage our students to not gather in large groups, to wear their masks, to stay home when they're sick. If they've been told to quarantine, that means that they're home for 14 days, not just that they don't come to school, but that they are home because they could make people sick. We have students and families who may end up in the hospital because of a COVID infection, because they have weakened immune systems. We have families who literally cannot afford to be quarantined, because they finally found a job, and now have to ask for two weeks off to quarantine. These actions impact other people, and we need to keep that in mind and remind our students as well.
Thank you, Katie. I think the really important issue here is, we need the greatest cooperation from parents and families and community in keeping themselves, following the CDC and State of Arkansas guidelines in this respect, and that the idea, it's easy to have activities outside of school that don't follow these guidelines, is really putting all of us in some state of risk.
Right.
So we need the, we need the community to really understand that we're in this with you, and we're doing the best work we can, so we need the best work from you.
So how do we go about educating people? You know, because I mean, everybody hears all this all the time.
Right.
You know, I'm, I wear a mask, you know, follow all the rules, we don't gather, but how can we really get that stress to our community? And I don't know, I mean, I don't really know there's an answer.
And that's something that I may reach out to our principals and Maribel to see, because I'm sure from campus to campus, it's going to vary, just because of, there's more of an independent crowd here, where, you know, they can go out and hang out together, they can drive, you know, they have jobs. So it's something that I think we'll need to develop a plan. I know Arkansas came out with cancel COVID on campus for colleges, so I don't know if that's something that we need to come up with, or even have student body representation to help in that as well, because it's going to take responsibility on our, on our students as well.
I think there might be a discussion, and I'm not, you know, tending towards any kind of decision here, but that if there are extracurricular activities that this district is involved in, that are exposing our students and other students from other districts for other reasons to exposure to COVID, we might have to curtail some of those activities to make sure that we're limiting the opportunities for the virus to be able to have incursion into our population. for the virus to be able to have incursion into our population.
My understanding was it was just friends hanging out.
Yeah.
So, but yes, I will pick the brains of our principals and our high schoolers as well.
Do you have any sense of the guidance from the state about being tougher on those things? Or are we just working with where we are right now?
The most recent press briefings, our governor places the responsibility in the citizens to wear your masks, wash your hands, stay socially distanced. It sounds like there are no plans to roll back any. I can't remember what they're called, I don't remember now. But there are no plans to go back to restrictions or anything. So it's really the responsibility is on the citizens. So I think we need to reflect that here that our students need to know that as well, that it's.
So our careful. Our careful attention has put it put us at a lower contact and infection rate than the general public and other school districts in Arkansas. Am I correct?
I mean, that's that's what I find.
Yeah.
Which I think was why it was surprising when we had this jump from Wednesday to Friday last week.
Yeah.
Because I know that we can not have that.
Well, and I think we're doing this because we're a small population, we're a tight-knit community. We have the opportunity to be more careful than school districts, public or otherwise, that have very large populations that have a difficulty in tracking where these things come from. So we really require everybody's attention to making sure that we're as successful as possible and healthy as possible at Arkansas Arts Academy. Thank you, really, Katie, thank you so much. Was this what you signed up for?
No, actually. When I saw at school nurse saying there was nothing about pandemic.
That's not true.
All right, Mr. Young, how's things in your world?
Things are always wonderful, Katie, thank you, campus. A few highlights I wanted to go over. First of all, you know, we've had some dips and valleys getting the school year started, but we finally got the fifth and sixth grade specials. So then our kids are getting their two art forms every day. That was important for us, but we did have to take a break from that with our first outbreak with the COVID. So we could go in, measure classrooms, boost up, boost up again, measure again, then one more move. Just to get the kids in the classes they want to be in and also so we can invite those students that need to be in some intervention classes during those times and provide that work. So we're glad that our fifth and sixth grade specials are back going like they should be. And then also wanted to highlight the work that Nurse Katie and Ms. Schover did with the Red Ribbon Week. You know, because it kind of gave us a sense of normalcy for our kids. You know, to get to have those fun days where we're wearing things and getting to have, you know, because, you know, everybody's been, you know, the whole year just gasking in their mask. Then there's drool that comes out of the mask, that's a different story that we'll talk about later. But to get to see the kids, get to dress up and celebrate was a big deal. It was a big deal for the kids to get to have that. And then the adjustments that our parents and teachers made to make into the week costume parties possible. You know, because that's a childhood memory, we all remember those things. And we didn't want to cancel it, but we also wanted to be safe. And due to the great work of our parents and staff, we were able to to pull off definitely a memorable Red Ribbon Week. And but able to pull it off. As far as a trend we're observing, we're still seeing that desire to come back, back to school. Some of it because people are tired being home. Some of it is kids need to be around other kids, it's a need. And but as kids are coming back, we're kind of getting into this awkward state of trying to balance our social distance protocols. All of our classrooms, for those that have been on the K six campus, you know, are not culture state average size or intended size. And, you know, we made some adjustments to staff coming into the year. So with those two things, it's making it, you know, we're kind of creating a waiting list now for people to come back on campus, which doesn't excite people, you know, because when they made the decision, I'm tired of this. And then we say, well, you know, you're going to have to wait. It makes some people unhappy. And some of that's led to a couple of people saying, well, we're going to go somewhere else where we can throw our kid and 28 other kids. So that's a choice, that's a choice. So that's a trend we're observing and having to work on. As we go from now until the winter holiday break, the thing we're still trying to do is figure out those best environments for those virtual kids and those blended students. Because when we had kids sign up for that environment, we kind of had two very different needs. We had a group of people that needed extreme flexibility in their learning. Mom and dad are at work all day, we might not be able to do our lessons until the weekend. And then we had other people that are like, I want someone with my child at all times leading the virtually through this environment. So we are more on the side of independent learning with our virtual. And for those that want the direct instruction, they're struggling more and looking for more balance on that side. So that's something we're working on as we go from now to Christmas break, just how to, you know, how do you accomplish that? Because most of our virtual teachers are leading about 80 students right now. So as far as adding, you know, asking them to do more would be very difficult. But also how do we improve what we are, we know that's a need. So that's something we're trying to do. As far as things coming up, just know that, you know, we've got our Thanksgiving break coming up with the two virtual days to start that off. We've got our Rise and Shine Celebration coming up this Friday. That's when we celebrate our terrific kids and we gather as, this year we gather three times because of social distancing and one grade is always in their classrooms to watch. We also allow our virtual kids to watch. For those that don't know what that is, it is basically a pep rally for our kids. You know, we get so excited about coming to, well, we used to get excited about coming to see like a performance here at the PAC and we'd all cheer for that, well, we all need to cheer when we learn our qualification papers. So, you know, that's kind of the the purpose of that and to celebrate kids. We also have a food drive going on that was spearheaded by the community service class here at the high school. And I don't know if Ms. Wright's going to talk more about that.
Anne.
Oh, wonderful, then I'll let her talk about how she will look in her Hippo Valerina costume in Islam. So that would be fantastic, I look forward to the visual. Also, we have a virtual book fair going on, so anyone out there that needs to get presents or if you'd like to support a child in need, we have that opportunity for you with our virtual book fair. Just go online to our website and you can find the connection there so you can help out. That also helps our library as far as getting more books from our library. And finally, by popular demand and through the great work of Ms. Carpenter at the high school, want to give credit there, we are going to have a virtual student picture day so that the virtual students can come into a safe environment and have their picture taken. So, you know, they'll always remember their year of virtual COVID-19.
So Matt, I think what's really interesting about your comments here is what we learned from this experience is that some students are very self-motivated and complete the work in a timeframe that makes sense to them, that they're doing the work. And there are those who need attention in a more specific way every day and every way to make sure that they're being successful. And I think this should inform our instructional strategies as we move forward because one size does not fit all for our students. And there are great ways to be successful and they aren't necessarily in the old model of how we provide instruction. So thank you for sharing that with us. Heather?
I'm going to start with our celebrations. We have our students of the month for November, and again, these are nominated by their teachers for making a positive impact either virtually or in the actual classroom here on campus. So for seventh and eighth grade this year, the representative is Tess Farini. For ninth and 10th grade, it's Elaine Kenomi, and for 11th and 12th grade, it's Ashen Libby. So thank you from your principal for those kids and all the others who are nominated, making every day a positive day at Arkansas Arts Academy. Our teacher of the month for November is Mary Gentry, she's our Algebra I and AP Statistics teacher. And she goes above and beyond to make sure that students have opportunities to connect with her curriculum. Our community service food drive so far has yielded 308 items for the Give Back Program. I'm going to be sending out a reminder that they can still bring things in on Thursday and Friday. Right now it will not be me wearing the hippo costume, it will be Matt, he will be slimed. The high school is just ahead of the elementary school, 157 to 158.
Recount.
Nope. You're not in that business, your son counted them, so. We also want to celebrate our first successful social event at the high school. We did outdoor movie night the day before Halloween. There were no positive cases from outdoor movie night. Everyone wore a mask, they were socially distanced and they had a lot of fun outdoor watching the movie. They watched Ms. Wright cringe in the scary movies, Ms. Wright doesn't like scary movies. But it was it was a lot of fun to get to see the kids be together and enjoy the hill and and have time to socialize safely. So the student council is looking for more ways.
Yeah, you're stealing Diego's thunder.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Diego. But we're looking for more ways that we can do that. And as far as trends in teaching and learning, I just submitted our AP exam order for this year. In 2019, 2020, we had 69 students who took 76 exams. This year in 2020, 2021, we have 124 students taking 184 exams. That's close to 100% increase for those kids. So our teachers have done a really good job of recruiting students into their programs. We look at those PSAT scores from 10th graders to help us identify the kids that are going to be successful in those programs and challenge them to take an AP course. We also have teachers who are identifying students who might need extra help right now, whether they're in the virtual setting or here, and inviting those students in on Wednesdays to be in their classrooms, working with them directly when the campus is pretty quiet. It's almost everyone is virtual on Wednesdays. So that's been helpful for some of our students who have dug themselves some pretty deep holes, especially for our seventh and eighth grade students. As far as announcements, Adrian Leffingwell, who is our ceramics teacher this year, hopefully permanently, I should stop saying that. He's currently at the Ozark Folk Center, so this was supposed to be a field trip and we're going to take students there to learn about traditional methods of creating pottery and fire filming. But he is there and teaching, using video technology, teaching all those things for the master artisan there and typing that instruction back to students on campus. So we had to come up with a creative way to make that happen. We have qualifying jazz students who are looking forward to participating in the All-Region Jazz Clinic next weekend. That's the first, this is the first year we've sent jazz students to do that. So thank you to Patrick Salmons for heading that up. The culinary department is conducting their annual pumpkin pie fundraiser. And Regina's added pretzels to the crust this year, it's really good to get that little bit of salt in with your sweets. You can place orders on My Payments Plus and the pies will be delivered on the 20th of November. Interested juniors and seniors are going to be taking the ASVAB, which is the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery on December 2nd. That's a career aptitude test that can help guide students in the selection of their career goals, especially if you have no idea what they want to do. And then I want to follow up on Katie's announcement. We just want to remind everyone to stay masked and socially distanced whether you're outside of school or inside school. Encounters that happen outside of school result in COVID-19 infection that can affect what's happening here as well. So if you want to be able to stay here, then please, please make sure that you wear your mask and socially distance everywhere. Upcoming events, we have Portfolio Day at Crystal Bridges happening on November 21st. I don't know.
I was going to say.
I'm just saying. The Parent Teacher Guild has organized a shop early shop local fundraiser in downtown Rogers. So they have a list of, I think, like 12 or 15 businesses in downtown Rogers that will give our school 10% of their sales for everyone who walks in and says, I'm shopping with Arkansas Arts Academy today. So a way to partner with our downtown with our downtown partners and with the Chamber of Commerce and make sure that we're supporting the community that we're located in. So that's really cool, thank you to Amber Carson and PTG for organizing that. Reminder that school is virtual on the 23rd and 24th, the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. High School Art Bazaar will be on the 5th and people will sign up for a time to be in the building and looking at student art that they might want to purchase for Christmas presents. And then the virtual release of A Christmas Carol is potentially happening on December 11th. So Jordan Haynes and his theater crew have been working really hard on that. I think that's everything. Diego, trying to get over to Diego.
Diego and Kaya are virtual tonight because they're both seniors and they're not allowed back on campus until, I don't know, when?
Thursday.
Thursday. So they're, they're ready.
Yeah, I just want to comment, Ms. Wright, yes, she was cringing and she was a little scared in the last movie, so she didn't mention that part. Yeah, the movie night was a great success. We had a lot of kids from the elementary and the high school campus come out. And generally, it's, we got great comments and nothing bad happened, so that was great. On the student council front, we're almost finished with the club website. We have a few student council members working on that and that should be out within the next week for sure. And that'll be great for virtual students and in-person students to get a chance to connect through clubs. Next on my list is t-shirts. We had our t-shirt contest and we had so many good submissions, we had to choose two. And so we have two submissions that we chose and we are looking at the prices for t-shirts right now. So, you know, by the end of semester for sure, we'll have pre-orders out and everything. So we're just finally finalizing details. And also on the prom committee and the student council for 7th and 8th grade, they also had Halloween events. I don't know them perfectly, but I know prom committee had a successful costume contest and costume participation. So great job with them for encouraging community. And same thing with 7th grade, they had a thing called a boo for your boo, kind of like a crush for your crush kind of thing. And yeah, I heard it's successful as well. So on the high school things, if it's not COVID related, we're really good.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Gentlemen.
Yes, Ms. Wright, thank you so much and Mr. Young for allowing students to embrace the season through Halloween. That was great since we are an art school, thank you so much, it's, it was, it was a lot of fun. With arts integration, before I start, thank you teachers. We've got some teachers here, teachers are watching, teachers are here. I'm one of the few administrators who just kind of worked with so many and it's a tough year. It's a very tough year, but let me tell you how creative these teachers are. We've got a lot of resources that are being made available to us. We have a lot of educational institutions that are sharing, a lot of arts institutions, a lot of museums, and they're taking advantage of this. And what I see in the classroom are these kids really, really engaged, even though all this horrible things going on. What you do see with the smaller classes is pretty remarkable. So I know it's a lot of work, but you do see the effects of what's happening. So thank you so much and I love working with these teachers. So with that, I'll give kind of a little overview of what's kind of happened. Let me go to the elementary. We are now in our third month in our second year with our collaborative program with Crystal Bridges. It's called My School, My Museum. This year we have two grades, which are the fourth and the sixth. We started with the fourth grade back in September. We had sixth grade that just finished up theirs, that was with Mr. Taylor and Ms. Serna. My partner, who is Ann Wenzel, worked with Ms. Serna. She had a wonderful, wonderful program of an elegy. I don't know if you all know what an elegy is, but it's a poem and it's a beautiful poem and the kids. poem, and the kids got it, and we connected it to the land in Crystal Bridges, and I could not believe how amazing that it was. Ms. Serna's phenomenal, but I tell you what, that was a, it was a beautiful program. Go to our website and you can, you'll be able to see what the students create, and we'll be sharing those. And then Mr. Taylor, it was early civilization and how to really do primary research and express that artistically. And so those are gonna be coming as well. So this month, it's going to be the fourth grade, and multiplication is what's going to be taking place with the math. If you're familiar with Doris Herberg, and you've been to the museum at Crystal Bridges, you will know her work, it's with the spools, all those massive spools of thread, and it gives us optical illusion. So they're gonna be combining this type of process and using multiplication tables, and we look forward to it. We got two new museum educators from Crystal Bridges that are working with us. And then for the math, they are looking at energy. So we are diving into Joseph Cornell, phenomenal artist, and going to be doing these energy boxes. And so again, go to the website and you'll be able to see what all of these students are kind of creating. At the high school, we finished up last week, well, around Halloween, it was the two-sentence horror stories in seventh grade, Ms. Kerr's class, which they were phenomenal with a great illustration. And this week, we are working with seventh grade with kind of a chemical, I hate to do a spoiler, but parents, this is what's going to happen, spoiler alert, for Christmas, there's gonna be some bat bombs in your stocking. So we're gonna look at how these things are made and do it a little more artistically. So you won't have to go to the website, you'll get to experience it around Christmas. And then with our physics, we have catapults. Mr. Myrick is always looking forward to incorporating the arts, so this will be a wonderful time to look at ballistics, and they're gonna be launching things artistically. So look forward to that. And then finally, as Ms. Wright mentioned, Crystal Bridges. As we kind of started, we partnered with Crystal Bridges for the National Portfolio Day. It has grown every year, and of course, this year has been challenging. But what is happening is it has allowed for schools that could not necessarily come here to Crystal Bridges to meet with the students, that they're doing this virtually. So all of the art teachers have been given an opportunity to register their students for an opportunity to meet with each one of these, and they will virtually look at their portfolios, which is pretty phenomenal, because now it's not just kind of this region, it, it is national. So that's, that's pretty exciting.
So Aaron?
Yes?
Next Halloween, there is a national pumpkin launching contest that is really very important. It has to do with distance, it has to do with whether or not the pumpkin disintegrates or if it lands in complete, complete integrity. So I just think there's an opportunity.
On the north lawn?
On the north lawn.
We could do it at P Ridge, we'll bring in Regina.
I think there's news coverage here.
Two pies.
All right.
And we'll make sure that Mr. Young is out in the field marking each one. Tell them that he's the target, but.
For someone in EPO. I'm just suggesting, thank you very much.
All right, special education.
Ms. Scott asked me to give a little report. The good news is, we now have filled our positions. Our last teacher will start the week of Thanksgiving break, so to get those positions filled in such a high-need area, special education positions are not easy to find. And we found some great people to come in and work with our kids, our kids are excited about that. And Ms. Scott has done a lot working with our staff, our spit staff, on getting our paperwork in order, meeting with our new families. So we're excited, and I know you all, all of my students will be very sad that I will not be in that classroom anymore, but instead I will be a target of the pumpkin. So good news on that front.
So Latoya Gully will be joining us at the elementary level. We met with her, she's just a really remarkable individual, and you met her at a meet, was that right?
Hey, I'm always looking.
So we're, we're so grateful that she is gonna be part of our special education staff. She's a, what a great asset, and welcome to her, thank you.
And she worked in Los Angeles for seven years.
Yes, we talked about that. Yeah, absolutely.
In the what industry?
She's a theater person.
And she's been in the whip.
Yeah. And she still gets residuals for commercials.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ooh, ooh.
Hey, Tony, I had a special ed question, and I apologize, I didn't, I planned on, I brought it to you guys at the last, for the last meeting, and then I had something, come up with work and wasn't able to be there, but I've had a, we had talked about, I think Nate had brought it, maybe putting together a parent committee to look at needs that we have in our new environment for special ed-related tough needs. And I've had a lot of people reach out to me since that was mentioned. And I just think that would be a really good thing for us to do, and I'm happy to head that up as part of the board.
Great, I think that'd be great, just reach out to Richard.
So we'll follow up with you on that, thank you so much.
You bet.
Okay, it was Rachel, Richard, and we'll go from there, all right. Did Skidry Athletics, is that you, Mr. Young?
That is Director Skidry.
Oh, is he online, okay.
Yes, I'm here. Just real quick, we're, we're in a transition with our athletic program. Our cross-country team just finished up, and your Student Council, Council President was one of our runners. Our team finished sixth in the state, and we had Darian Yang to finish seventh. Just going through some of the personal bests, we had several to record PRs, but, you know, Darian, you know, carried us through the year. We, we ended up as the 1A, 2A conference champs with a perfect score. A perfect score is when you have five runners that finish 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. That doesn't happen very often. But Coach Perry has done a great job with our group. After kind of a rough start for all of them back in, in the summer, the team really came together, and it was just a great opportunity for me to be part of taking them down to hot springs and kind of going through some up and downs. Katie and Matt were kind of involved with, with a lot of that was going on, but again, just trying to keep kids safe and, but still able to, to compete. So really, just, I wanna brag so much on Coach Perry and, and her efforts with the, with the runners. As I mentioned, transition, we're moving from an outside sport to an inside sport. Basketball is off and dribbling, running. I know that Mr. Burrows has included some information in the packet for you. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. We have four teams, Coach Fred is coaching all four. We have 68 players. Now, I mean, we have 68, but they don't all travel, and some of them will, will travel to away games, some only will dress for home games. Would, would like to say, during our first home game with Coach, with St. Joseph, their athletic director gave us a call the next morning and just wanted to brag on us how, how things were very organized when, when they came into the gym. A lot of times, right, at that area, it's really congested, but we had good spacing. Our gatekeeper does a great job at just keeping the, the flow moving. The gym was marked off so that people were, could sit together as families, but also to spread apart with the, with the six feet and the social distancing. Our benches on their, for our players were able to, you know, and with a small gym, it was hard, but we were able to put the chairs down the sideline and even on the baseline to, to again, help with the, just keeping our kids safe. But, you know, we're going through some changes here with moving, not in a different direction, but just moving more independent, especially with the finance piece. So we've had some, you know, different processes that are in place that we're working through with Neil and, and Mr. Burrows, and I appreciate his support, willingness to, to work with us. And just, I think we're off to a good year. We have good numbers and just a great bunch of students to, to work with and be around. I mean, I was in the van where the suburban with them for over eight hours last Wednesday and, and Thursday, and it's, it's great to, to hear the conversation that went on, you know, being in athletics and for the number of years that I've been in, in public schools, to hear, you know, when, when you have cheerleaders on the bus, the football players can sing along with the cheerleaders. But normally, when it's just the football players in the public, public school, no, not so good. But this group that we had with Darian and Diego and Wesley, and they can do it, and they were all talking about having a gig Saturday morning, having it up and be somewhere by nine o'clock so that they could play an event. So it's just a, a good group to be around, and I know that Coach Fred says the same thing about his boys. Yeah, we're running into, you know, tough time with COVID. We've had to cancel or reschedule some games, but I think everybody across the state is in the same situation. So just appreciate everything, and there's my update, Tony.
All right, thank you, appreciate you.
So David, thank you for your leadership and, and hard work here, but we really have to have a conversation in the next, next six months or so, or even sooner, about our forward strategies for athletics and extracurricular activities, which takes students away from our campus and also in confined buses and otherwise. So I look forward to that conversation, and thank you for all of your assistance and success.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, next thing, CEO goals for 2021. Normally, we would have set your goals already, Richard. We're, we're kind of, you know, into the school year quite a bit, and you only been here two months, we haven't had that opportunity to work with you on setting the goals and objectives for this year. So I've asked the board members to start thinking about what their goals and objectives for you would be, and I asked you the same question. And I think the best thing to do is let set aside an executive session, since this personnel to talk with you and set those goals. Now, they'll be probably not quite as robust as they would be in a normal school year or something at the time. But I would like to propose that we meet one day next week, we can do it all via Zoom, do it virtually, so we might have to gather again, and set those goals. I would propose next Tuesday, if that would work for everybody, if I need to poll people, we can do that instead about tomorrow afternoon. So Nate, is the next Tuesday work for you?
I'll be traveling, but depending on the time, I can be available.
Would Wednesday be better?
I'm traveling all week, so I just, I will find time, I just need to know.
Okay, so Leslie and Howard, with one day next week, Tuesday work for you, for us to get together and discuss these goals, because we need to do it in executive session. We got some things that need to be due tonight, so I think next week we do that.
Sure, Tony, are we looking at the day or the evening?
The evening.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with, I can do next Tuesday.
Okay, Howard?
Tuesday's fine.
Okay, so I will send out, I'll work with, with Richard tomorrow. We'll get the invite set up for next Tuesday, probably 6:30, same time, that way I can eat and everything beforehand. So we'll do that and move forward with sending Richard's calls. Okay?
Okay.
All right, next thing, new business.
I did not know if you knew that Jeff and Kara are on.
Oh, Jeff and Kara are, you want, I did not know that. Hello, Jeff. Hello, Kara.
Sorry, I was late, I lost time.
So it's.
It's a blur.
Work for you guys?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. We'll just plan on that then, and next Tuesday, setting the goals and objectives for, for Richard. All right, sounds great. Thanks for making it. New business. Richard, something about scandang.
Oh, well, I think I mentioned this. It took us nearly seven weeks to update our system for award management from the federal government, and we're good to go. So just waiting to hear from Bonnie Colville when, when the money starts to flow again. So, so happy about that. Yeah, and is Bonnie here? Is she online?
No.
No. So just an update about, in terms of audit, we're in the process of the audit process for last year's work. They're coming to the district offices for a couple of days. I think we're in good order. We've looked for everything that we need to look for. We've sent them all the files that they've asked for. I think we're in good order, so I'm just wanting to let the.
We've always done well in the past in the audit, so hopefully this is continuing that tree.
So all good.
All good. Great. So discussion of items and publication, anything? All good? All right, so the next thing is we're gonna go into executive session. So Heather, on Tuesday, Richard, and the other board members, everybody else can go. We will not be doing any voting as far as senior players go at school. In essence, this meeting is over, we will enter our official activity in executive session. Those of you that are online, we will talk to you later, and Howard and other board members, send our receipts and see if we can file an executive session.
Just a reminder to the folks online, we, there's a separate executive session for the board members meeting, Zoom meeting that we'll switch to. Tony, are we gonna need to come back to this meeting to finalize?
We will to adjourn.
Okay.
Hey, Vic, is it the same time, same one as last time?
You should have an invite in your calendar for this one.
Do I have an email?
I can send it, give me a moment.
Please, please do, thank you.
Yeah, if you could send it to me too, that would be awesome, I'm so sorry.
No worries.
It's Leslie, thanks.
No worries. Anyone else online that need it? All right, I'm gonna pause the recording on this, pause our video stream.